Mr. Harris, are you, are you here and ready?
I am here. Uh, give me one second. We'll start the recording.
This call is being recorded.
And we get ready to begin.
Alrighty. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Heights and to the community newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board, and also to the city's website and in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Harris, I would just like for everyone to know before you do the roll call that once you come on these calls, you are now on the city's clock. So there should not be anyone making any background noise. The tape needs to be clear. If you are not on the call or you're not speaking, please mute yourself because you are on the city's clock. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call.
Mr. Blakely?
Present.
Ms. McCall Will Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Mr. Michelle?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn? Ms. McBride?
Present.
Is she muted?
I don't know.
Okay, go right ahead.
I don't see her on the line.
Okay.
So also present is, uh, Mr. Adam Cruz, the Business Administrator, Mr. Colin Cherry, Mr. John Morelli, the Director of the Law Department, and Mr. Edward Kalogi, who is the Special Counsel on behalf of the City Council.
I didn't put his actual name.
Uh, let me just find that person and mute them. Okay. So, the item on the agenda to be, uh, presented to the governing body is Resolution will be numbered, Resolution number twenty dash two-three-six, which is a resolution appointing the acting municipal clerk in the office of the city clerk of the city of Trenton, effective May twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Is there a motion to introduce such said resolution?
Counsel President, Counsel President, I have a question.
So, wait till we pass the motion, Mr. Harrison, and your question will be, uh, allowed on the floor, okay?
Thank you.
Move by Council? Move by Councilman McCall Will Wilson, is there a second?
Yes, I second it.
I believe that was Mr. Michelle, correct?
There's a lot of noise going on, Mr. Harris.
Right. That's coming from Mr. Rodriguez's side.
Counsel President, can I ask my question now?
We gotta make sure that we have the second.
So did Mr. Michelle second that motion?
Yes.
Motion was moved by Councilman McCall Will Wilson, seconded by Mr. Michelle. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Harrison, you have the floor.
Okay. Uh, Counsel President and my colleagues, I don't have a resume for Mr. Berry, and I'd like to know what his, uh, experience is with being a municipal clerk, um, regarding the Faulkner Act. So I don't have any information, so I'm asking that question. And was this advertised? Do we, do we, do an advertise? Are, are, you know, I mean, so that's my question. I don't even have a resume here. So can, uh, can somebody answer that question?
Well, Mr. Harris, do you want to answer it? Do you want me to attempt to answer it?
I can't answer that question.
Pardon me?
I, I can't answer that question. I don't have, I don't have any resume for the gentleman, and I don't know his qualification.
Mr. Harris, you, Mr. Harris, you were sent a resume. You were sent a resume by me. But anyways, I can go ahead and answer the question.
Unfortunately, Counsel President, I did not receive a resume from you. All I got was a copy of the resolution from Mr. Kalogi.
And, okay, so...
Yeah, Mr. Kalogi, answer that question then?
Uh, yes, this is Mr. Kalogi. I was provided with a resume, which I used basically for the contact information to insert the individual's name, address, et cetera. So there is a resume out there. If it wasn't communicated to council, I can't speak to that. I had nothing to do as far as the selection process, so I'm not aware of what was done or not done. I simply prepared the resolution based on the information that was given to me.
Mr. Kalogi, does Mr. Berry have the qualifications to be a municipal clerk in the city?
Well, that's, that's a policy decision that the council has to make. Um, I reviewed the, I mean, the resume, and I can just tell you, I'm not taking a position either way. He was apparently the manager or the administrator of several municipalities. He doesn't, I believe he does not have the RMC, but we are able to appoint someone without an RMC, you know, up to a year. You know, your only issue here, obviously, is you want to get something done fairly quickly because you want to get somebody in that position because the clerk is leaving on the twenty-second. So, I mean, whether it's this gentleman or somebody else, that's your call. I just proceeded with the information that was given to me and put it in the resolution.
Right. Mr. Kalogi, I would have liked to have seen the resume, at least. Like you said, whether it's Mr. Berry or somebody else, I would at least like to see a resume.
Oh, I, you know, I totally, uh, concur. I don't know what the process was. I thought, you know, I would have, I guess, just presumed that the resume, uh, had gone out to the council. It was given to me, but I didn't know if it was communicated to anybody else.
I've received a resume.
Counsel President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead.
You know what? I have a few issues that I'd like to bring up. Number one, what we're experiencing here is a coup d'etat in the office of the clerk. Um, I am, uh, really, uh, concerned that Mr. Harris did not have, uh, an appropriate, uh, opportunity uh, to, uh, be brought up for tenure. Uh, Council President, uh, McBride unilaterally, uh, decided to... And there was no conversation as a city, uh, council to discuss, uh, Mr. Harris's performance. And so that's the first issue that I have, uh, that, you know, Mr. Harris was, um, basically removed without a conversation with the entire body. And that's why we find ourselves at this juncture where we're rushing to find a clerk. Furthermore, I think that this is a failure of leadership, uh, from Council President McBride because if she, uh, felt that Mr. Harris, uh, was not going to be reappointed, this should have been done six months ago. We knew that he was up for tenure, and we could have, you know, as a body, had a discussion about his performance and then decided, uh, to, uh, go in another direction or to keep him. But this is a selection process that should have happened months ago, and now we're in the middle... We're in the middle of a presidential election and a pandemic, and I am concerned that we are going to have great difficulty in finding a qualified registered municipal clerk, uh, particularly as it relates to this council's shenanigans, as well as the perception of the dysfunction of the city of Trenton. Number two, I, I'm also concerned that there was no advertisement done for this position. I'm going to repeat that. There was no advertisement done for this position, uh, for the interim clerk, and that's disturbing. Furthermore, I find disturbing that I was not, I did not receive a copy of his resume. I am being asked to, um, you know, judge his merits as a registered municipal clerk, and I don't have any resume. So that's another failure of leadership from Council President McBride. Number three, the fact of the matter is, uh, from my understanding, uh, Mr. Berry does not have, uh, a registered municipal, uh, clerk designation. He doesn't have that certification. So in my eyes, he is unqualified. We need someone with the credentials, uh, that will give me confidence that he has the insight and experience to be a registered municipal clerk, and he does not have that designation or certification. And that leads me to another question. Has he ever served as a, uh, registered municipal clerk or a municipal clerk in any municipality? That's a question to, I haven't seen his resume, so I, I, people who have seen his resume, has he been a registered clerk or has he been a city clerk in any municipality in New Jersey?
Okay, so first, let me just start by saying this. His resume was sent, his resume was sent out, and I don't understand...
Who was it sent by?
I don't understand, I don't understand how, um, can I, can I, can I speak? Once you've spoken, can I now speak?
I'm not done, but I just had a very simple question. I just wanted to ask, has he been a registered municipal clerk anywhere else?
Okay, so let me, let me begin to answer some of your questions. The first question...
If you can answer that question.
I'm gonna answer all of the questions in the order that you gave them to me. And if you, you've already had a chance to speak, now allow me the opportunity to respond.
I'm not done. I'm not finished. I just, well, let me, let me complete my statement, and then you can answer the question, uh, answer my questions in, in totality, because I don't want to break it up. Uh, and so I'm going to further, I'm going to continue my statement, and then you can, uh, answer the question. And so number one, I did not receive his, uh, his resume. He has no experience as a municipal clerk, from my understanding. I did a brief Google search and saw that Mr. Berry, uh, who I have no problem with, was actually fired by the Willingboro Town Council, um, and, uh, because they had concerns about his, um, his, uh, tenure in Willingboro. And, uh, you know, I just think that it is, um, improper for me to consider someone when I haven't seen their resume, he doesn't have the qualifications to be a municipal clerk, and furthermore, we're at this point because my colleagues did not do the right thing as relates to Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris had a distinguished tenure on this council. He did a fantastic job. He was someone who was qualified, who had all of the qualifications and certifications, and because of the actions of President McBride, we find ourselves at this juncture where, um, we are considering someone who is unqualified, has a troubling past uh, in municipal government in New Jersey, and that we haven't even seen their resume. And furthermore, there hasn't even been an advertisement. And so I look at this as the, um, the, the, the outcome of the cronies. I don't know the personal relationship, uh, that, uh, President McBride and council members have with Mr. Berry, but I think it's shameful that we are selecting someone without the qualifications, without an advertisement process. Um, and, uh, I think for those reasons, I'd like to know what his experience, what his, uh, experience is as a municipal clerk because the clerk's office is very different than a, uh, administration office. And, you know, we, we literally are, uh, having government, um, by, um, you know, flying at the seat of our pants. And so, you know, I think it's improper. I think this is another example of my colleagues' collusion and their bad decision-making process, uh, as it relates to making decisions for the city of Trenton. And, uh, Mr. Berry works for Tony Mack. Uh, I did some research on that and saw that he worked, uh, for Tony Mack. And, uh, I just think that, um, you know, we need to select someone who is qualified, who has the credentials. We're in the middle of a very, very important time in our city. Uh, you know, we need someone that has the experience as exemplified by having a, uh, registered municipal clerk, uh, license, and the person that they bring before us doesn't have that. And so if you could address my concerns, I think it's shameful that this council body has not received even a resume of who we're considering. We're supposed to vote on someone, and I have to Google their name because we are not aware of, um, this person's qualifications. And so I also'd like to, um, you know, is he on the line? Are we going to have an opportunity to ask him questions? Uh, you know, generally, when we're considering someone, uh, let, let, let me finish. Uh, generally, when we have, as council, is being asked to, um, consider someone, they're generally on the line so we can ask questions, so we can address concerns. I'm concerned about what happened in Willingboro that he was fired from. I'm concerned the fact, about the fact that he has never been a registered clerk before. I'm concerned the fact that he doesn't have the registered municipal clerk designation. Those are all things that I'm concerned about. And so can you address my concerns, uh, President McBride? And, you know, that's, um, that's what I have to say.
I'll do my best. First, let me start by just saying this. No, no council member forced Mr. Harris out. Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris's contract was up on June the thirtieth. Mr. Harris's position was to be, is to be advertised as past practices for that position. Mr. Harris felt as though he did not want to be, the position to be advertised. He felt as though that he should, we should have just said, yes, we hire him. That was not the consensus that I got. I got the consensus that they wanted to put it out for advertisement and that Mr. Harris, along with any other qualified applicant, could apply because, because that was past practices. Mr. Harris was not forced out. It was Mr. Harris's decision to, to leave. I went into the office the day that it was made public to the newspapers, and Mr. Harris informed me that he had accepted another job after we got off the line with our, uh, council meeting last Thursday. He told me that I had a very, very short window to find another, uh, acting person because he was, his last day was the twenty-second. The municipal put it out, okay, I, I can't talk with all the noise. You guys are so disrespectful. This is a public meeting. Ooh, this woman is crazy. Kathy McBride needs to...
I agree.
And so it was not Mr. Harris being forced out. The position was being advertised as it should be advertised and as it was been advertised in the past. So when I went into the offices to pick up my paperwork, Mr. Harris informed me that his last day was going to be on the twenty-second, that he felt as though he did not want to interview for the position, period. That was no decision of mine. It was no decision of any of the, of the council members. It was a sole decision that Mr. Harris made. That is the first thing. The second thing was that when it went, when Mr. Harris sent over his press release or whoever sent over the press release from the administration or from Mr. Harris's office, then the public knew that Mr. Harris had resigned. Then two resumes came in, one from, uh, Mrs. Carter and one from a Mr. Berry. I did my polling, and I don't understand why Mr. uh, Blakely, Councilman Blakely is stating that he did not have a resume until today because as of, as of last Thursday, on the meeting that we held, we said that we were calling an emergency meeting to put on a acting clerk. And in that point in time, Mr. Blakely, Councilman Blakely, had the opportunity to say that he had not received it. And let me just be clear, my, I did not know that the city administration or the IT department had shut down my emails until yesterday. I was not aware that I could not, I could only email out to Mr. Harris, Mr. Morelli, and to the mayor's office until yesterday. At this, yesterday morning, approximately, uh, between eleven-thirty and eleven-forty-five, did I find out that my email, uh, had been blocked and I could only use it for three people. I did not know they were bouncing back. So I'm dealing with that yesterday and today to find out why. But Mr. Blakely had an obligation from Thursday until yesterday. If he had not gotten that resume and he knew that we were assigning an acting director, he had an obligation, him and Mr. Harrison, to call me or call and find out where that resume was. And if Mr. Harris knew that my emails were being blocked and if he did not get the resume, he could have called me. I was in with Mr. Harris all day yesterday. And Mr. Harris could have said to me face-to-face, because I was in his office for four hours yesterday, "Councilwoman, I never received the resume." I asked him, had he received the resolution? The contract wasn't ready, and plus we had a statute that was given to us by Mr. Ed Kalogi. I forwarded that packet to Mr. Cruz. I forwarded the statutes that, um, Mr. Kalogi forwarded me. I forwarded Mr. Cruz the resume, the resolution, both to Pinella. I thought that Mr. Harris had gotten the same information and all of the other council members. So I don't understand why all of a sudden today you don't have this information that was sent out, um, on Monday. We got the resolution back on Monday from Mr. Kalogi. That resolution went out, and so did the resume go out. We had two resumes of Mr. Carter and Mr. Berry, and those are the two. I did not have time...
I wasn't advertised. I wasn't advertised.
It wasn't, it, it wasn't advertised only from the Trentonian, when the Trentonian put it on. That's how we got those two applicants, is because the Trentonian had put it out there because we didn't have time to do anything. Mr. Mr. Harris said to me, "You need to get an acting person in here because I am out the door." Those were his words to me. And so before I could even do anything, it was on the front page of the newspapers, and those were the two, uh, resumes that came over. Those were the two people that we, uh, uh, weighed in. And so I got a consensus from the council.
Were there interviews? Were there interviews?
This is no clue. This is no clue. I don't need you to question me now because I'm speaking. This is no clue. This is, was a process. It was two resumes from the, uh, Trentonian. We did not have time to put out a, uh, our, um, a advertisement because we, me and Mr. Pinella was in the process of advertising the complete position. And so because this took me, me and the rest of us by surprise, we had to do what was necessary. And that meant that I had to take my, my leadership and go over those two resumes that I had and make a decision and do a consensus, and that's how we got that. There's no clue. There, there, there was a process, and I followed it, period.
Counsel President, Counsel President, a question?
Counsel President, no, Joe, 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 let me, let me ask you a question.
No, 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 no. Where, 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 you had an opportunity, Mr. Blakely.
President McBride, I have a question. You didn't answer my question. You didn't answer my question.
We have Mr....
You did not answer my question.
Excuse me, I did. I did.
Let me have a, let me have a registered municipal clerk.
Councilman Blakely.
You didn't answer my question.
And I answered my, your questions to the best of my ability, and the only thing that I did answer uh, was if Mr. Berry was on the line. And yes, he is on the line, and he can speak to his own, uh, credentials. But when you say that you did not get that resume, you had from last Thursday to yesterday to inform me. You called me up about a sign on a, uh, park side avenue fence, but you can't call me up if you didn't receive the resume? Are you serious?
President McBride, President McBride.
Counsel President, Counsel President.
The matter is, I have received a resume. I should have received a resume. I shouldn't be hunting for a resume that I am supposed to be considering. It was never sent it for me.
You didn't have to hunt for anything. You didn't have to hunt for anything. If you didn't have that resume, you should have called me. Like I said, you called me up for this nonsense about your sign being taken down on a, on a city fence, but you can't call me up about city's business? I'm not trying to indulge you. What I'm saying now is this, there's a motion on the floor. Mr. Berry is on the floor, Mr. Berry is on the line. And if you have any questions about his credentials, you could speak to him about it. And as far as Mr. Harris being pushed out, Mr. Harris was not pushed out. I want to make myself very clear. Mr. Harris walked out on his own accord. So do not throw that back to me. Mr. Harris made that decision on his own. Now, if Berry is on the line, you had a question for Mr. Berry. I'm gonna let Mr. Berry have a chance to defend his own record, and Mr. Berry, you have the floor.
Counsel President, I have a question for you.
Mr. Berry has the floor. Mr. Berry has the floor.
President McBride, I have a question. Well, let me answer my question.
Are you on the line?
Uh, I have several, I have several, uh, callers that are muted. I don't know which one is his.
I don't know his number, but if you could unmute just to see where he's at.
Well, my question is, who did the poll? I never got polled. I never got polled.
Neither did I. Neither did I. Neither did I.
And now we're finding out there's a miss, there's a, somebody named Carter. It was another person. Didn't know about that name either.
Madam President, yes. Am I, am I on the line? Yes, you are. Is this Mr. Berry? Yes, uh...
Yeah, so I, so Mr. Berry.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
I have questions. I want to ask a question.
I said, "Excuse me," and you wait up and let him introduce himself, and don't be so disrespectful. Could everybody touch their systems off if they're, could everybody mute their system if they're not? Mr. Berry, today, Mr. Berry, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, good afternoon, counsel. Uh, thanks for having me on this, uh, conference call. First of all, I would like to just, uh, kind of, uh, back up and, and, and let people know that, uh, yes, I, um, my, my background is, uh, in, uh, management, uh, administration. But, you know, I've also been involved with many, um, other jurisdictions throughout the state and other states that, uh, were smaller, so that I do have a, a wealth of knowledge about the Faulkner Act. I do not have an RMC, but I also want to remind people that, uh, I'm retired and am happily retired, but I'm, I'm also in service. I've, I've, I've been doing this for a little bit over twenty years. So, um, as far as the policies and procedures of a clerk's office and many of my, and many of my, uh, jobs, they, they reported to me, and I, I did have to know a little bit about what was going on. But I think, uh, more importantly, uh, this, this isn't, uh, something that, I, I want to try to be a, a, a member of, uh, Trenton City Government as, as a help. I'm not, I'm not looking for anything full-time. I'm just, you know, uh, someone called me, a third party called me that, uh, knows me very well, saw the ad in the paper and suggested that I, um, I applied. So I did that, not, not, not expecting that I'd really get a phone call, but I, I was glad that I could, and I, I really want to be of service. So as far as answering your question about being a clerk, no, I've never been a clerk, but I've had many clerks report to me. I understand the Faulkner Act very clearly. Uh, in response to, uh, having a, uh, a questionable, uh, background, that, that kind of hit me, but I, I don't really want to touch that because I've only been dismissed in one, in one out of probably ten. And, and you mentioned Willingboro, and, and, uh, because of a, a court, uh, proceeding, I can't discuss it, but it was, it was based over a wrongful termination, and, uh, that did get cleared up. And, um, I can say that I'm, I'm very happy with the, with the way it ended up. But, uh, in, in the, in the totality of this thing, I, I think that I can run a clerk's office and, and be an acting clerk and, and, uh, do the right thing for Trenton until, uh, you can secure somebody with an RMC. I would never want to enter into a, uh, an agreement with not being totally qualified. So, um, I'm very familiar with, uh, the city government of Trenton, uh, even though I was only there for five and a half months. And you're right, I did work for Tony Mack, but I'd like to think that I... And you're right, I did work for Tony Mack, but I'd like to think that I worked for all the people of Trenton, and I, I, I did the best that I could under the circumstances. But again, uh, also, uh, being involved with, uh, the Department of, uh, Community Affairs, I, I know how those things work. Uh, I just, you know, I, you, you, you get what you get from me, and, and I can understand if you want an RMC, that's fine. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
President McBride.
Go right ahead. He's on the phone.
Thank you. So, it's very clear, Mr. Barry, that this is not an attack against you. I'm concerned about the process. Um, I believe that it was the duty of-
Do you have a question for Mr. Barry?
I, I, listen, President McBride, can you please stop interrupting me? I am taking my time to get context.
No, do you have a question right now?
I, I do have a question.
Right now, we're, we're asking, if, if you have a question for Mr. Barry. If you don't have a question-
President McBride, President McBride, can you relax? Mr. President McBride, can you please relax?
You already made a statement.
Can you please relax? Can you please relax?
I am, what's the question?
I have a question. You're out of control.
Okay. Ask the question. You've already made a statement.
I'm gonna ask Pres- President McBride, you're interrupting me. I would've asked the question by now if you had given me the, the respect due as an elected member of this body, so be quiet.
Go ahead and ask the question.
Listen, I'm talking. President McBride, I don't need you to tell me that. I'm asking a question. You need to relax. You're literally interrupting me. So, Mr. Barry, I'm most concerned that you don't have a registered, uh, municipal clerk license. I'm also concerned that from my understanding, you've never worked in a clerk's office. Can you tell me if I'm incorrect in that statement? Have you ever worked in any capacity for a, you know, in a city clerk's office in your long career in municipal government?
No.
And, okay, so have you taken any, you know, what is, do you have any, uh, degree in public administration or any training in, uh, you know, that would give me confidence that you have the experience for the real esoteric, very, um, detail or very specialized skills that you need and insights that you would need in the, in the position? Could you tell me your educa-, your educational background?
Yes, my education background is a BA in Communications. Uh, I'm in the, finishing up the, the last bit of my master's in, uh, government. Um, as far as what you, you know, the specifics of, like I answered, I, I've never worked in a clerk's office, but if, if I go back early in my career, working with smaller jurisdictions, I, I had to know what the clerk was doing because the clerk actually reported to me. In other jurisdictions, the, the clerk doesn't report to the administrator or the manager. So, again, you asked about the Faulkner Act. I, I'm very, very, uh, familiar with the Faulkner Act. Uh, the DCA actually cleared me to work in Trenton back in twenty eleven. And, and you talk about being able to have the fine, neat details, and, and when I left the city, I, the DCA hired me to actually monitor the city. So, uh, you know, I, I, I just think that I do have the, uh, professional qualifications to run a clerk's office, even though I do not have an RMC. And again, I'm-
Well, President, well, this is what, so, Mr. Barry, I think my issue is, I think you would be a fine business administrator. I think that you obviously have the experience to be a business administrator. I'm just concerned that you have never worked in a municipal clerk's office. You don't have the certification, and so, that makes you unqualified to be a municipal clerk, even an acting one. And I think that if we actually had an advertising process, um, that was formal, we would've been able to garner more, um, interviews. So, like, I'm not sure why. We could've asked for more resumes over the course of the next week. So, how did you find out about this job? You said someone called you, or did you see, there was no advertisement in the Trentonian? So, can you tell me how you found out about this? You found out about this job i- in an article in a newspaper rather than a formal advertisement?
Actually, it was a person that is from the area who called me to let me know. Well, firstly, I wanna find out, you know, what I was doing, and I explained to them I had retired, and they said that they thought the, the city was in distress, and so, I, I sent an, I sent an application in. A- again, listen, I don't wanna get involved in, in, uh, pro, if, if it feels like I'm being pushed on you because I told you I'm happily retired. I thought I was gonna be called back in the service to help. That's, that's what I'm here, I'm here to serve. So, you know, if you don't think I'm qualified, you know, I can understand that.
So, listen, um, so, Mr. Colosi, Mr. Colosi-
I'm not done asking questions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Colosi.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Colosi, can you speak to the, the RMC certification? Because you sent that over, I sent that over to everyone. I sent that legal doc, and as a matter of fact, Mr. Colosi, didn't you forward that legal doc, that, um, legal, uh, uh, finding over to everyone on the council about the RMC? Was it-
You know something? Not having my email in front of me, I, that's usually my practice, but it's also referred to in the resolution. New Jersey recognizes that there's gonna be occasions where things like this are gonna happen, and they have to fill a spot very quickly. So, there is a statute that permits the appointment of an individual who assumedly is qualified but does not have the RMC certificate. In other words, just to give you a way to get the job done until you agree on a permanent replacement. And it lets you do it for up to a year and even extend it beyond that, but I would certainly think that the governing body would be able to resolve this well within a year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, the fact of the matter is, I think that we're not a small city.
Mr. Harris, there's a vote on the floor. Mr. Harris, can we move to the vote?
Council President, I had a question to ask.
Okay, go right ahead, Councilman Harrison.
Okay. All right, my question is this, we, um, to Mr. Uh, Mr. Barry. Mr. Barry, certain members of the council have a copy of your resume, and according to the council president, her email was blocked. So, how did certain council members get a copy of your resume when I don't, I don't have your resume and I don't even know who, who Ms. Carter is? Does Ms. Carter have the certifications to be a municipal clerk? Yes or no? I don't even know who Ms. Carter is either.
Right, Mr. Barry couldn't answer that question, but you're-
Well, do you think you can answer it? Well, then, can you answer that? How come certain council members have a, a copy of his resume and I don't?
But you're, I didn't have, I didn't have, the only, the, I sent it over to Mr. Harris, and as always, that's always been my practice, to send information over to Mr. Harris for Mr. Harris to disseminate the information. That has always been my practice. And so, when, um, the, the, uh, the fact that, uh, some of the other council members have it is because I could, some of the other council members, I have their information into my regular phone. I don't have your information. Your, I only have your on my, your information on my city phone, which I forwarded all that information to you. And Councilwoman, uh, and, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Blakely, I don't have his information. It's only on the job phone. So, everybody that I sent was the ones that I had in my personal phone, but I also sent that to Mr. Harris to be forwarded. Mr. Harris said he did not get it, and, and maybe that is the reason, but Mr. Harris normally is the one that send all of, all of my communications out. And so, that-
The council president, you said you did a polling. You did a polling, and I was never polled. You never called me. I didn't even know about Mr. Barry or Ms., uh, Mrs. Carter. You've never called me about this. So, you're the council president, it's your responsibility to reach out to us, and I never received a call or an email from you. So, how is it that now you're trying to divert it to Mr. Harris or divert it to somebody else?
Hey, I'm not trying to-
Well, then, answer the question. How come I didn't get a call?
The only thing that I'm saying to you and Mr. Uh, 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 and, and the other council members, you knew on Thursday that we were going into this session, and so, you had from Thursday till, uh, yesterday to, to, to get in touch with me if you didn't have that information. And so, every time that we get ready to go to do business, you wanna, uh, you guys wanna make a scene to the public, but you had an opportunity to call me before we got to this call, so all of these questions could've been answered prior to the call, but you chose not to reach out to me so that this, all this information could've been shared.
President McBride.
And so, now, we're at the vote, and so, Mr. Harris led us to move for the vote.
So, I should be reaching out to the council president when the council president did a polling, which I didn't even know about a polling? That's what doesn't make no sense.
Uh, 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 uh-
You did a polling, but I didn't even know about it, so I'm supposed to reach out to you about a polling?
Joey, I was, I was informed by the councilwoman that she reached out to you. So, you say that you don't have any info, any information about it.
You, you, you didn't, where's the resume?
So, Mr. Harris, we have, uh, Mr. Harris, we have a vote and a motion for a vote on the floor moved by Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolton and seconded by Michelle. Can we move to the vote, Mr. Harris? Hello, it's Robin Vaughn. Can we move to the vote?
Hello?
If you're ready for the vote.
Hello?
Hello? Yeah, Councilwoman Vaughn, are you just coming on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
We're, there's a motion on the floor for Mr. Barry. Did you want to ask questions before we move forward, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Oh, um, just, that's the resume that you've forwarded to us for the interim, um, clerk, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yes, we can-
Well, why were you, why wasn't I forwarded an email, a resume? I didn't have a resume.
Councilwoman Vaughn, are, are you, what, are you wanting to make a statement?
No, I, I read the resume, and I'm in support of the, um, the, 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 uh, the individual to, uh, act in that capacity until we, uh, have an opportunity to, um, get additional candidates from the search that's gonna be launched, um, in the coming days for the permanent, uh, clerk.
Okay. Mr. Harris, can we move, can we move forward with the-
Council President?
Ye- yes, cou-
Council President?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, to Councilman Harrison, when I received the resume, I was on the phone with, I actually talked to him on the phone, and I did mention Mr. Barry and the resume I had received.
Right, but, but Marge, I did not, the, council president said she did a polling, a polling regarding, uh, Mr. Barry and, and Mrs. Carter. I don't even know who they were, so I don't have a copy of the resume, so now you're telling me to vote on something when I don't even have a copy of the resume? So, now, council president tells me I'm supposed to reach out to her when she's the council president, when she's supposed to be getting information to us? But certain colleagues have the copy of the resume, but certain council people don't, namely, Mr. Blakely and myself.
But that was because her email was blocked and she wasn't aware of it. And the, and the city of what she said. And the city knows that they locked my email, and I had not a clue until yesterday that my email had been cut off from our circulation, but I don't wanna get into that now because that's being dealt with, with the attorneys. Right now, I want to mo- go forth with the motion for the vote, Mr. Harris. Thank you.
What about the poll? What about the poll?
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Blakely?
Uh, so, before I vote, I have something I'd like to say. So, the fact of the matter is, I'm gonna be very clear, this is a coup d'etat on the clerk's office. I wanna be very clear that, uh, when, uh, Council President McBride put this motion up, uh, put the advertisement up, uh, she understood clearly what she was doing. That was a way for her to get rid of someone who's extraordinarily competent, extraordinarily credentialed and qualified. So, we are right now considering a, uh, a vote to replace, uh, someone who is eminently qualified with someone who had never worked in a clerk's office in his entire life. And so, I wanna be clear that, uh, shame on my colleagues for, uh, getting, um, you know, for running away someone who was a credit to this city, and Council President McBride can say what she wants, but when she put that position, and we did not consider a resolution for Mr. Uh, Harris to be a, uh, tenured clerk in the city of Trenton, that was tantamount to, uh, her, uh, firing him and bringing in someone who is completely unqualified to be a registered clerk, uh, to be a clerk in the city of Trenton. And for those reasons, because I didn't receive a resume, because he's unqualified, because he has a history of baggage, I am going to vote no.
Ms. Caldwell-Wolton?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
I have a comment first. Um, my comment is this, we don't even know if Mrs. Carter has the certification. Mr. Harrison, Mr. Harris was doing a phenomenal job as a city clerk. I don't know how that there was a polling done that none of, me and Mr. Blakely didn't know about this, didn't know about these other names, I don't have a resume, and exactly, Mr. Barry does not have the qualifications to be this, so my answer is no.
You, what do you know?
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
And Resolution twenty dash two three six has passed.
Thank you.
So, now, I'm going to open the floor for any comment from the public.
Recording and transcription are turned off.
Anybody want, from the public would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record. If you have no desire to speak, you can please re-mute yourselves.
Council President, I have to leave.
Go, go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolton.
Thank you.
If there are anyone from the public that would like to address the governing body at the time? Seeing none, and seeing adjourned meeting. Seeing there are no comments from the public, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? So, move. Okay. Moved by Ms. McBride, seconded by Ms. Caldwell-Wolton. Is that correct?
Councilman Michelle seconded.
Okay, I'm Councilman Michelle. Mr. Blakely? Ms. Caldwell-Wolton, she left?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison?
I, I couldn't hear that, Mr. Harrison. What did you say?
We are voting to adjourn.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn?
Let me get muted.
Ms. McBride?
Yes, I don't know what's going on. The calls are being muted. What a joke.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.